Good morning, everybody. It's 10 o'clock, and this is a regular elections court meeting. Welcome, everybody. As we do have a warrant for the captain of the judge. He'll be coming in a little late, but he'll be here. I'll call this meeting to order. And item number two, the pledge of allegiance, please stand for it.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, any public comments, Ms. Raina?
There's none.
Okay. Item number four, discuss and take action to approve new vendors' lists. Start counting auditor.
Yes, the vendor's review and I recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
If the move by Commissioner Peña second by Commissioner signs, any discussion? Is that all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number five, approval claims presented by the county auditor.
Yes, the vendor's review and I recommend approval.
Motion to approve, your honor. Take it.
If the move by Commissioner Peña second by Commissioner signs, any discussion? Is that all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, I think we got here, Ms. Rose Navidad, we go to item 11, which okay with the court? Item 11, discuss impossible action to approve the second amendment to the tax agreement agreement between Star Solar Branch LLC and Star County, Texas. Rose?
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Your Honor. We're here before you today because we'd been here a couple of months ago when we did this amendment, but we didn't realize that the date that they initially had proposed for us didn't coincide with the other taxing entities that had agreements. And so, in order for us to have this be timely and lined up with all other entities, we're having to adjust the date. We had put March, and it's supposed to be December 31st, 2025. Now, I'll remind everyone that this agreement, or this project, is about $140 million project that will come to the area. So, we're very excited to see potentially some development continuing to happen throughout the county to grow our tax base. So, we're asking today for an approval so that we can actually approve the second amendment with the date that will be more appropriate for the company.
Which is that date, ma'am?
December 2025.
December 2025?
December 31st, 2025, yes.
What is it, final completion, or what is it then?
They expect the project to be done, yeah.
Final completion?
Right.
Okay, when is it gonna be started?
They suspect that by this fall, there should be some activity, maybe earlier. They don't think it's gonna run until 2025, but because of the issues with supply chain right now, and with steel, and a lot of the delays that are happening, they just don't want, they wanna have some ample room and leeway in case they get stuck on, but their timetable is actually a lot shorter than that.
Don't hear motion?
Just approve. Take it.
If the move by Commissioner Perez second by Commissioner signs, any discussion? Is that all those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Rose.
Thank you. If you could just give me one second, but we want to get this over to them as soon as possible.
Do we need to sign something?
Yeah, we'll pass the, you, yeah, we actually, well, you have pen?
I have a pen.
Okay. You should read the very first line. Thank you. We'll bring this back to you in just a second. They put, we, yeah, we need to make a little correction.
This goes to Judge.
We'll get this back to you here before Commissioner's Court is open.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Judge.
Where were you?
Six. Well, we go back to regular item number six.
Okay. Okay, item six is to discuss the proposed tax rate. This is required, this is not to approve a tax rate or anything like that, just to discuss, you know, what, you know, what I'm recommending. And the tax rate that I want to recommend is leaving the same rate that we had last year, which is .7632. One thing about that is that it, that would automatically call for a rollback election, but I'm hoping the people will understand that by leaving this rate, it's exactly the same amount that they were paying last year. If the values go up, I mean, that's, that's be under our control, but the rate would be the same. Now, if we choose to lower the rate, then who really gets the benefit? On a $100,000 home in Starr County at .76 tax rate, we're looking that the average home payer would save maybe $30 a year. Now, if you take that same, if we lowered it three cents, if we, that same three cents for some of our bigger companies that we have in the county that have values of 100, half a billion dollars in value, they would save to the tune of 300,000. So, that's the reason that I'm proposing the same tax rate. I realize that we're all in a crunch. I certainly don't like to pay taxes like no one else does, but last year we did lower our rate, this year we cannot. I think our employees deserve an increase, and this is the only way that we can afford it. Now, I know the commissioners have also acquired equipment and buildings and stuff that are entirely needed in our community. Law enforcement, you know, we've, we've spent a chunk in law enforcement, and really that is the backbone of any society, is, is the security of our people. So, I mean, I think we have a good point, I think we can defend it, and hopefully, you know, it will go through. I think it's for the better of Starr County, and that's what we're all here for. So, that's all it was, is just to discuss. I don't know if you all have any questions or anything that you might want to ask. We'll have another meeting later where we will approve a tax rate. Right now, it's just for discussion. Any questions? We also want to have a workshop, and this workshop would be so that any department head, anyone that wants to come and ask about their particular budgets is certainly welcome. And of course, the public is also welcome to come. We'll have a workshop, then we have a calendar. The tentative date to adopt the tax rate would be at least 72 hours after a public hearing. The public hearing is scheduled for September 12th. So, everything will be posted in the webpage, and of course, we'll, we'll have it in the newspaper and wherever needs to, for it to be. I don't know if there's any questions from anyone. So, there's no action need on that, it was just for discussion. Moving on to item number seven, this is also an action item, and this is to renew the 2023 Indigent Defense Improvement Grant from the, for the Public Defender Program. Ms. Alanis, I think you had this.
Yes, sir. It's just to continue on with the Public Defender Grant, supplement from the JADC of 66% of them.
66%?
Yes. And then it's a, my county Duval, Jim Hogg, Starr would cooperate with the remaining counties.
Okay, last year, was it at 50/50, 50%?
Uh, no.
It was 66. Oh, excellent, okay.
How much was last year?
66?
It was a grant. And the county was, I guess, considered 245,000?
Oh, this is the grant, not the actual funding of the Indigent Defense Program?
Uh...
Okay, the grant, okay. Yeah, the grant was 66%. Okay, so it's the same as last year?
Yes. Is it for the Public Defender's one?
It's a grant, yeah, the grant pays some of our expenses that we have of the Public Defender. See, there's two different things.
That's what I'm saying, I mean...
Yeah, one, one is, you know, where we pay, you know, a chunk of money, but the, the state gives us 50% of the budget, and that one runs in the hundreds of thousands.
Yes.
Okay, of dollars. And, and we, Duval and Jim Hogg, pay our portion according to a per capita. That's one part of it. This one is a grant that we apply for to offset some of our expenses that we have in that other program.
So, we can use this money to pay the other 40, 44% that we're lacking?
Well, I don't know about the percent.
No, so, what's, I don't understand.
The TADC provide the county 60% for the public defenders, the legal services that they provide, and the county has to provide a contribution?
Yeah, so this offsets our contribution, correct? Yeah, so, so let's say we, we contribute, and this is just a number, I don't know, but let's say we, we contribute $100,000 towards the Public Defender Program that we have, and we get from this grant, whatever the amount is, let's say it's $10,000, we get 6,600 back to pay for some of that other expense.
Yeah, but you don't have a total for the, how much are you applying for?
Yes, it's the same as last year.
But yeah, but what was last year? 100, 200, or?
Uh, it was 245,000.
245,000, that's what we applied last year.
That's how much the county has to match.
No, I'm asking you, I know what they're gonna have, what I'm saying, this grant here, we know that 56% of the total grant, whichever amount is, we're lacking 44% that the county has to pay.
33.
33.
33. 66%.
66%, okay, I thought it was 56. Okay, that 33%, we can get paid out of this grant we're applying for, right?
Well, I think, see, I think we're getting, we're getting the...
I'm asking, we are applying for this grant here, and this money, according to the judge, is money that we can offset for paying the 33%. But how much is the amount that we are applying for?
How much are we applying for this grant? Not the one that we match the state, but for the Indigent Defense Grant, where we get 66%?
Okay, the total for the entire program is 967,000.
Okay, but see, but that is the, the total dollars where the state gives us 50%?
Yes.
Okay, but that's another, another program, right?
Uh, there's, there's actually two programs with the JADC.
Okay.
The Formula Grant, and then there's the...
Okay, the Formula Grant, that's this one?
Uh, no.
Which is this one?
This is the Indigent Defense.
Okay, where we pay the 500 and some thousand?
No, it's not that one.
Yeah, so there's only two. The, the Formula Grant and the one where we pay 50%, and the state pays 50%, that's the big number, right? That's where we pay 245,000.
Yes.
Okay. The Formula Grant, which is this one, that, that is a grant much smaller.
Yes, not only, you have a similar 40,000.
Okay, and if, and if, we get, let's say we get 40,000, and it's 66%, so the total grant is 120,000, and we pay 40, and we get 80.
And you can look at it that way.
Well, I mean, I don't see any other way of looking at it.
Well, I mean, if it ever matched, the county has to plan and...
Okay, and that's what the commissioner was trying to get at. How much did we apply for, 120, plus or minus?
That's where you apply, 120,000 for this grant, for this one right here.
For the Formula Grant.
Well, no, thank, this one right here, the, I'm gonna put it in the front here, it's not the formula for today. The formula is not on the agenda for today.
Well, what are we voting on right now?
This is the, for the Indigent Defense, it's an improvement grant program.
That's the big number?
Yes.
Okay, I thought, let's see, no, I thought we were at, at 50/50 for the, for the, for the grant, the big one. And you say it's 66?
Yes, the grant provides 66% of the particular grant.
I don't think it's that, that big amount.
We, you know, we, I guess we could approve it, I mean, we, we need it, but I need, you and I need to get together, because the last time that I had a discussion with, with Indigent Defense, with the commission, we started off, Commissioner, you probably remember, at 75/25. That's, we, we put 25%, and we jumped on it because it would save us a lot of money from the court-appointed lawyers, okay? So, then the following year, they went to 50/50, okay? And that was, it was still profitable for the county. Then the following year, they wanted to go to 75/25, where we would put 75%, and we said, no, because now it's not profitable to us. So, then they came back and said, you know what, we'll leave it at 50/50, we will not change it. So, I was under the impression we were at 50/50. If they're putting 66, that's, that's good news, but we need to verify that, because I never got word that, that they were funding more than, than the 50.
I took the rest of information for you.
Okay, you know, I, I think, you know, I recommend that we go ahead and approve the grant if it's 66.
Apply for the grant, not to approve it, or?
To...
It's already been, it's already been approved, the, that amount of money?
No, we've been moving it every year since 2016.
Yeah, they, they don't, they don't, they don't approve, it's already there, we just need to get it.
You're gonna register nearly a month.
Right.
I do some more.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item eight, is this the same thing?
Okay, the, number eight's just a resolution.
Oh, uh... In order to send it in, okay. Okay, this is just to approve the resolution to, to, to apply for the, or to get the funding?
Take it.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item nine is an action item, and it's to renew the engagement with Hart, Silva, and Company for the audit of the bridge. They've been doing it now for a few years.
I have to approve, Your Honor.
Take it.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 10 is an action item, and this is to, to use 75,146 dollars from, from the general so that the sheriff's office can go ahead and order, this is all grant, you know, will be reimbursed, so that they can go ahead and, and order their body cameras, and then once they order them, then we get reimbursed the 75,000. Is that correct to you? So, this is just so to grant them that.
Motion to approve.
Take it.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay. The following items all pertain to elections, and the first one is to call the election for November 8th.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the ordering of the election for November 8th. This is a general election discussion. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 13 is to approve the notice of election for the November 8th general election. This is just to approve the notice, I guess, that we put in the newspaper?
Yes, it's, it's...
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 14, again, having to do with election, is to approve the list of election workers for November 8th.
I believe you should have that in your, in your packet.
I do some more, Your Honor.
Take it, Your Honor.
Okay, motion in second to approve the list of employees, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 15 is to approve the election polling places for the November 8th general election. And those should be in the packet, I mean?
Yeah, they're in, in the, in both the order and the notice, we have all the locations. It's the same four that we always use, and on Election Day, it's the 14 that we always, that we always use. Same ones that we used the last election, for Election Day.
I do some more, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 16 is an action item, is to approve a temporary branch polling place and early voting for November 8th. What this is, is that, again, in order to, to save money for the county, that we would use a revolving site where we would have, let's say, two days in La Victoria, two days in Salineño, two days in San Isidro.
Perhaps in T.
For early vote, yeah, so that we can give those...
Two days or one day?
Two days.
It has to be two consecutive days.
I put a copy of the, of the code in, in your packet, and it's, it's a temporary period for early voting, at least two consecutive business days, and at least eight consecutive hours. So, that's why you have two orders and two notices.
Where, where is the list of you?
Yeah, I don't see it in, in the list of employees.
Okay, and the second one says, okay. In La Victoria. The list, the list... Okay, no, I'm gonna have temporary. Is it, is it, the, 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 right here?
Yeah, I have two copies, because if you didn't approve it, I have the other one ready. The temporary locations would be from the 24th to the 26th, in Abel Gonzales Community Center, in San Isidro. That, that would be three days, Salineño Nutrition Center from the 27th to the 28th, and then on that Monday, the 31st. The Catholic Church in El South on November 1st and 2nd, and La Victoria Community Center on the 3rd and...
Where is the election?
The election is going to be November 8th, and we start early voting on October 24th.
Okay, so it will be 3rd, November 3rd, and...
So, if we, if, if you approve of the temporary branch location, we're gonna have the four sites, and then three days here, three days here, and two days in La Victoria, and two days in El South.
Let's say, I'm ordering in San Isidro, the days that we're gonna go to La Victoria is still gonna be open in San Isidro?
Yes, yes.
I do some more, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The other thing that we might be coming back later on to the court is maybe having a change of hours, instead of from 8 to 5, I've been asked of having, let's say, from 9 to 6, to give the people that work till 5 a chance to go vote in the afternoon, but we can come back later for that.
Yeah, I can, we can, we can still do that. And we also have, I believe we can also do it on a Saturday, I think we can open also.
If someone requests a Saturday.
If, if I get a request, we can also do that.
We're trying to give everyone an opportunity to vote, but at the same time, keeping our costs to the minimum.
And if you can see the, the list of workers, it's only three, only in the, the Commissioner's Court is where we have four. Everywhere else, it's just three workers.
In the courthouse.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else on that? If not, item 17 is also an action item, and this is to approve a contract to lease election equipment to the city of Río Grande, I'm sorry, to the Río Grande City Gruya ISD.
Yes, we were requested by the school that they want to contract our machines, not our services, just the machines. And so, I drafted a contract, our county attorney looked through it, you should have a copy of it in your packet, and then also a quote of what, how much, you know, we would charge for, for the machines. Now, we do have enough machines, they are, they do want 20 machines, because they have to have all the same places we have on election. So, we have 42, so we have enough for ours and theirs.
You're gonna rent the machines, but you're not gonna run the election, you don't have to do anything with, with...
Uh, no.
Counting the votes or anything?
Uh, no tabulating, I'm not gonna be in charge of posting for them, anything, we're just gonna rent the machines, that's all, that's the only thing.
If something happens, it gets jammed, or?
Uh, no, we're, something like that, we, we do, it's in our contract that, that we're not in charge of tabulating for, for, or getting their results, but if they do have an issue, because John works over there, I'm pretty sure he can figure it out.
I tell him I don't pipe on you.
It's the, but if something like that were to happen, of course, it's our machines, and we would go over there.
Yeah, if something happens that it's a machine failure, probably what we'll do, we'll switch it out while we get it fixed, but that's our...
Yeah.
I do some more, Your Honor.
Take it.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Your Honor. Item 18 is an action item, is to approve a donation to Food Pantry Precinct 1 for $174.
Precinct 2, yeah. Precinct 2.
Precinct 2.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 19 is an action item, and this is to approve, I guess...
Speed bumps at San Isidro.
Juanito Road.
With Mr. Laurel and Mr. Garza.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna remove them this week.
Okay.
You wanna remove them? You're gonna replace them, okay?
Los puso sin permiso, and there's four pegaditos, so people have a hard time. I'm gonna eliminate them, but no other ones.
Okay, is there...
That's a motion.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, under discussion, Mr. Montalvo, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I've always been under the impression that any road, county road, is county property, and a citizen cannot go and do anything on our property, the commissioner can, I mean, that's his property, but no individual can, can, can do that.
You have to consent of the...
The...
Okay, and so, to remove them now, the court has to approve?
Yes. We're gonna do, we'll, because he's gonna put something else there.
Okay, okay, well, if he wants to put whatever, it's up to you.
I'll put it on, no problem.
Okay, so I do have motion in second, Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have a lot of budget amendments from item 20 through, let's see what is, well, from item 20 to item 20, or 40, our budget amendments, are there?
Item 40.
Yes, the vendor's review and I recommend approval.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Take it.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 41 is an action item, and this is for a budget correction, is that in order?
Yes, it's in order, it's...
Motion to approve.
Take it.
Moved in second to approve the budget correction. Honorable fair, please aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. It is 10:30, and pursuant to section 551.074, 74, we're going to executive session to discuss... to discuss orders, salaries, and to discuss, uh, B C B S coverage, insurance, and, uh, section five-five, one point oh eight-seven, to deliberate regarding economic development negotiations. We'll be back shortly. It is, uh, eleven-ten, and we're back in open session. We only had three items in, in executive session. The economic negotiation, there was no action needed on that, and the Blue Cross, Blue Shield coverage was just informational, so no action needed. Yeah, the only one that we need action is on the order of salaries.
I do some more, Your Honor.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And that's all I have, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Moved in second, Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.